Hello and welcome to the June eight, uh, June, July twenty-second. I'm reading the wrong date, July second, 2024 Select Board Meeting. The whole board is present, town manager, town clerk, and other members of the public and staff that have stamped the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first we have the approval of the date that I was reading, the June 18th minutes.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Recording in progress.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Terrific. Uh, first, public comment. Does anybody wish to make a public comment? All right. I will close the first public comment. We have a public hearing for the adult-use marijuana storefront and adult-use marijuana cultivation facility, 468 Portland Street Herbal Pathways. Is this for Herbal Pathways? Zach?
There he is.
Hello. Uh, so, um, James, anything to say about this particular location?
Um, no, we had a, just a lighting violation that, um, once it was brought to their attention, they took care of right away. So at this point, there's no active violations or complaints on the property.
Terrific. Uh, Zach?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Branly. I represent Herbal Pathways. I haven't answered any questions the select board may even have, but if there's nothing, I won't occupy your time and belabor the point.
How's business going?
I think it's going pretty well. Um, they're, they're, they're pretty happy with the storefront there.
Terrific. Did you?
They had any issues or anything like that that you want to bring to light for us?
Um, I don't believe so. I do want to just mention an appreciation for the code enforcement officer. We did try and address the complaint about the lighting quickly, and the CEO was very responsive to our attempts to address the situation. And so I just want to, I just want to say thank you to the code enforcement officer.
Good. Any other questions about Herbal Pathways?
We need a separate motion for each the storefront and the cultivation for his marijuana license.
No, you can do them together.
Okay.
I'll make the motions. I'm going to do the adult-use marijuana storefront and adult-use marijuana cultivation for 468 Portland Street Herbal Pathways.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? You're all set.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Have a nice day, Dave.
You too.
Thank you, Zach.
Zach.
All right, we don't have any reports of committees. We have a report from Department, BCM. Howdy, here.
Good evening.
I'm Jeremy.
My Jeremy.
Jeremy Caston. Do I say my address still?
No.
Uh, I am the, now the director for Berwick Community Media. I'm just coming to reintroduce myself, let everybody know that I'm very excited, as you probably can tell, for, uh, for what's coming. We are continuing to do all the good work that Berwick Community Media has already set in motion and been doing for all these years and looking for ways to be more useful, to do a better job connecting with town departments. Uh, I have a meeting next week with the police chief and the captain to talk about how we can be more useful to them, and I plan on meeting with all the departments and continuing to find ways for BCM to be, um, the most useful to our citizens and to our town. I think that, that's it. Unless anybody has any questions, I just wanted to, to mention that I'm here and that I'm always available for, for any questions or any issues that come up and just hoping to do a, a great job.
All right. Any questions for Jeremy?
Nope, nope. We appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll talk to you soon, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
All right, uh, today we have the appointment of our new town manager. Uh, right. So, Arthur, please come up to the microphone here.
Good evening.
Please, tell us a little about yourself and introduce yourself to the town.
Sure. My name's Arthur Capello. I live in Rochester. I have six children. Um, I live with my wife and my youngest daughter, who's 20. Um, I've been town administrator in Gilmington, in Farmington. I've been, I was on the budget committee for 13 years in Farmington. I was a selectman in Farmington. Um, I've been a code enforcement officer for several different towns. My background in municipal government is quite extensive, mostly in New Hampshire, so I'm looking forward to the challenge with Maine. And I, I look forward to working with the board and all the residents of the town.
What, uh, what drew you to Berwick, Maine?
I'm sorry, what?
What, what particularly drew you to Berwick, Maine?
It, it's a small community, um, similar to where I was working in Farmington, size-wise and square footage-wise. It's a nice community, and it's, I believe it's an up-and-coming community, given all the research that I did with the brownfields grants and things like that that have come through. There's a lot happening in this town.
Terrific. Um, as we had already voted on at our last meeting, we're going to have overlap between you and the current town manager, so you can get your footing, get introduced to everybody. Um, we've allotted up to two months for that, but we, we assume that it'll probably be a shorter timeframe than that.
Yep.
Given that you're very experienced and, you know, uh, James is a good communicator with, with what needs to be done. So, um, do you have any questions for the board before we, uh, vote on this stuff?
Not at this point. I'm sure I will as, as time goes on. Um, it's always, uh, fun to learn to work with the board, uh, selectmen, and find out exactly what they expect and things like that, so I'm looking forward to it.
Terrific. Um, as we've already discussed, the tax collector, treasurer, and road commissioner, they're, uh, those are titles that are usually, uh, put upon the town manager as well. Uh, as of right now, there's still some ambiguity about whether somebody out of state can do that, with or without permission, you know, but there's still some ambiguity there. So, we're not going to assign those roles to you tonight.
Okay.
We're going to get clarity on that, and, you know, hopefully, next meeting, we can get that taken care of. In the meantime, James is going to continue in those three roles as well. So, uh, does anybody else have any other questions or issues?
I have a question for the board.
Yeah.
A couple of questions. Um, is, you know, we, we said we'd have an overlap for up to two months. Who determines when that period is up?
I think that would be a discussion for the, the board and between James and Arthur. Once, once they both feel ready to, for, for Arthur to take over all the responsibilities, um, that would be the time for it to, to break apart there, you know?
And James is, is looking for, uh, other employment, so if he, he could come back in three weeks and simply say, "I've taken another position."
Well, that's one of my other questions. What if in two weeks, Arthur feels comfortable, what happens to James? He no longer has the position as town manager, is he still a town employee?
James is, is prepared for, you know, to, to separate, you know, as soon as we're ready. So...
Is that our last meeting, when we talked about funding the two managers' roles?
Yep.
Um, if I remember correctly, we decided to use contingency money?
I believe that was correct, yes.
Is, I, I thought a few meetings back, is Lisa Vargas, the finance director, you know, told us that the contingency money was for unforeseen circumstances and things like that. As, this has obviously been planned for quite a while, why wasn't it put in the budget, you know, as an overlap?
We didn't have, by the time the budget went to, to, to the vote, we didn't have time to do it. The, um...
Well, we talked, there was talk ahead of time of the hiring a new town manager and such. Is, no, at that time, there was talk of overlap, is, you know...
We didn't have a timeline at that point.
Right.
Um, we didn't know when it was going to start. We didn't know when James was going to be ready to leave. We didn't know if there was going to be actual overlap. Um, so it, it wasn't something that would be...
I think we need some clarification on the contingency fund, though. Is, the finance director was very adamant when we talked about using it for another purpose, that that was for emergency purposes only. And, you know, I don't see this as an emergency purpose for that. Now, there were other pools of money that we could pull from, I'm sure.
If that is, if the finance director tells us we need to pull from other sources, then we can certainly readjust that. It's not, that's not, um, that's not a problem, in my view, that we can, we can come back and, and, and two weeks and, and change the source.
In two weeks, in two weeks, we'll be pulling money from the contingency fund until we get an answer.
And we can replenish the contingency fund from the other source, if that's what indeed we need to do. Where, you know, we, we've moved money from accounts before to make things work the, the appropriate way, whatever way specified by law. So, we'll make sure it, it is all working and, and, and that follows all statutes and everything. If there is any conflict.
Yeah, Dr. Lisa.
Yeah, we'll, we'll double-check with Lisa and, and make sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'll just go, I'll state right up front that I will not be voting, because I wasn't fully involved in the whole vetting process. Though I was following in behind the scenes, but I wasn't involved in the actual thing, so I will abstain from the vote.
Understandable, yeah.
That is totally fair. Any other questions or comments? Then I will make a motion that we appoint, uh, Arthur Capella as our, uh, incoming town manager.
Effective July 1st?
Effective July 1st, yes. Yesterday, effective yesterday.
Got Marty McFly's wheel machine.
Yeah, yeah, that's for insurance purposes. Um, and I'll second the motion.
Uh, all right. Uh, any further comments? All those in favor? All those abstaining?
I appreciate the trust, and I will not let yous down.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
We need another vote for you to approve Arthur reciting out of state, or title 30A subsection 2612.
Yeah, absolutely. I remember that, you know? Uh, yes, so, uh, we, I will make a motion that we approve the new town manager living out of state. Do you need all the subsection stuff?
I got it.
Outside of, outside of the state.
Second the motion.
All of those in favor?
And just to put anybody's concerns at rest, I live 15 minutes from here, so...
Well, it's not, it's not our concerns. It's apparently the state of Maine's concerns, so...
But any resident that may think I live far away, it's only 15 minutes, so...
Yeah, Rochester border, it's right down the city roads.
Uh, all right, terrific. We are happy to start working with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. All right, we have no unfinished business?
We do.
Oh, sorry. I don't know what, my brain is not on to that. I don't know what's going on with that. Danger, unfinished business, Dangerous Building 19, Catabell Lane. Um, so now we have the findings of that, or findings...
Findings in order.
Findings in order, there we go. Um, as discussed at our previous meeting, it's essentially a summary of all the, um, observations that, uh, the code enforcement officer saw and dealt with. And it's, before ordered, it's going to be, uh, immediately secured after this, after this vote, if in favor, um, that, oh, it needs to be cleaned up for the safety, welfare. And if it's not, then, um, we will take corrective measures ourselves. Correct. Does anybody have any questions about the findings in order?
We have, we have contact information for the owner, right?
Um, absolutely. I mean, uh, uh, Iris said she spoke to them at least one time at the last meeting, so...
Okay.
Um, they're, they should be contactable in a way to let them know about this, about this order.
Okay.
Any other questions? I would make a motion that we approve the findings in order as presented.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Terrific. Uh, town manager's report.
Uh, we are, I am working with Bateau Engineering and Maine DOT in a proposed partnership agreement. This would involve a grant, uh, with DOT that would construct turn lanes and median islands along a segment of Route 4. So this would be Blackberry Hill Road. Uh, the gas station would pay for, um, work associated with our project. Uh, so turn lanes into their site and then median islands. And also, the project will likely include turn lanes into cotton farms and Pond Road. So that's something that would probably end up being a budget request, um, for next fiscal year. So it would be June 2026. Um, so if that all works out, then you could start seeing construction. Yeah, that, that fall after funding could be available. So that would be, that's one of the identified, uh, high-crash locations. The courts at Memorial Field are all, Memorial Park are all painted, striped, and hoops have been adjusted. So, suggest checking it out. Looks great. Um, so follow up from last meeting, we had issues, um, with the new pumps that were installed. What happened is, uh, the pumps were replaced by an identical replacement. Um, and we actually needed a slightly, slightly different to ensure we got, we get the gallons per minute we're looking for. We're looking for a range of 400 gallons per minute from the pumps. So, uh, we're working with the contractor engineers to get that, um, fixed. We ran some tests, and we know what the issue is and what improvements to the pumps that need to be made to get it to run optimally. Um, so that's part of contract one with our water upgrades. Um, blowers were installed, so if you remember, uh, Fox Fringe lost pressure. One of the issues was when the blowers went down. So now we have, uh, two new ones, and then a third one will be installed. And then for all the parts we're replacing, we're keeping some of the old parts to make sure that if a part goes down, we have it to replace it.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, yep, so that's contract one. The, the filter media will be replaced, uh, towards end of July in the underdrains. So with those projects, that, thankfully, we haven't experienced drought conditions, but we'll be better equipped to help, you know, filter out magnates if it does come. Complete that report.
When does the contract with Maine Water come up for renewal? It was a two-year contract, right? I feel like time has flown by since then, so...
It was in December or January we signed the original contract, I believe.
Probably due for an update, too, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had one in a few months, yeah.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them on the contract.
Yeah, and find out, you know, if they can come give us an update as well, just to... Because I can't recall when the last one was, you know?
Yeah.
Same thing, it's the same thing with...
They were here, they were here in April.
Yeah, because they introduced a new supervisor. I knew that, yeah.
Was it? Yeah.
I don't think that was the first time.
April 16th.
Well, we, we had asked for, like, what, every, like, six months or so, I think we asked for.
Yeah, they were supposed to come.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was quarter, and they quarterly, right? Yeah, so they could do.
Yeah, I thought it was quarterly, too, yeah.
The, uh, does anybody else have any questions for the town manager?
Um, I do. Going to send me that stuff on the bench?
Write it in thick letters.
She wants a bench. Right.
Uh, uh, our family, as you know, my dad passed away this winter, and so we're kind of interested in, in, uh, maybe purchasing one of those fences. I just need the information.
Okay.
And then maybe post the information online, so everybody can have it, just so, so nobody, people stop by.
I, I did look on the website, didn't see it, and maybe I overlooked it, but I, I just didn't see it.
No, it's not on the website, but it should be, I'm sure. Okay.
Any other questions for the town manager?
Thanks, James.
That's all you got. I guess that's pretty good.
You know?
I didn't think of it until you said that, and I'm like, "Oh, wait."
When you, when you complain about the small stuff, it means all the big stuff is taken care of.
That's right, yeah.
All right, uh, Select Board Communications, we have, uh, some messages from Comcast. Uh, PAC 12 Network is no longer operating on the Comcast network, and they're increasing prices for various packages.
Of course.
Um, yeah, they want money, and they want to, they're going to get it from you. So you would, uh, if you're our subscriber, you're also going to get these notices in the mail as well. So, keep an eye out. You may be being charged an extra dollar, so... Um, approval of the accounts payable and payroll warrants. Oh, look at that. You start the new year strong, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6... Nope, they weren't. All right. We have payroll warrant number 103 from June 27th in the amount of $98,339.85. Payroll warrant 104 from, uh, June 27th in the amount of 103, 100, 1,000, 313.89. Payroll warrant 105 from June 27th in the amount of $104,514.30. Accounts payable warrant 106 from June 27th in the amount of $181,130.90. Accounts payable warrant 107 from June 30th in the amount of $10,374.90. Accounts payable warrant 108 from June 30th in the amount of $47,887.77. Less 7's and 8's in that one. And now, we're back at the beginning of the year. Payroll warrant number one from Ju-, uh, July 1st in the amount of $104,000, 104,176.64. And accounts payable warrant number two from July 2nd in the amount of $884,255.37. And one more. Accounts payable warrant number three from July 2nd in the amount of $70, 70, $70,148.77. I don't know why my brain's not working so well today. Just one of those days. I make a motion that we pay our bills. A second. Any further discussion?
Uh, just for the record, well, I was one of them, like, it was included in that one.
Oh, that was the education payment. The 800,000 of it was the education payment. We invest in our youth. All those in favor? Bills paid. All right, new business, the Water Bond Elanges. James, please explain the elonges.
This is, uh, this extends interim financing, because, um, we have not spent the 1.2 million dollars. So that pump project, that's part of that million dollar. Um, so we're still drawing that down, and once we spend all the money, then it'll be, we'll be into permanent financing, and we won't need a, possibly won't need a fourth elonge.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the town manager before I read off this thing? You have to read it out. Oh, yeah. Uh, all right, so, I move to make a third amendment to the 1.2 million dollar general obligation note dated July 23rd, 2021, and awarded to the Maine Municipal Bond Bank Augusta Maine as amended by the First Amendment dated July 22nd, 2022, and the Second Amendment dated July 21, 2023, by changing the maturity date to July 18th, 2025, and further to authorize the chair of the Select Board to execute said elonges and all other documents necessary to complete said amendment. All other terms and conditions are, as stated in the said general obligation note, will remain the same.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? I had to say elonges four times.
Five.
Patty, just want to be clear, uh, it says on these, uh, for the sign here, it says town clerk.
Yep.
All right, so is that you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what she does, last time I checked.
Well, not yet. Last time I checked, yeah.
You, you gave me this packet, and it says "sign here" a bunch of times, and I wanted to make sure that I wasn't saying it.
Yeah, I just need to keep it all together.
Just making sure.
Yep.
All right, moving along. Personal property.
Uh, so, um, Lisa provided a memo, wanting the updates, friendly fire, um, Parklandian attorney to collect that. Um, OMG, uh, there's a conflict of interest. So Lisa was asking for, um, direction, mentioning that the fees may be more than the collection amount. So, should we move forward for collection? Is kind of her question on that account.
And this is for property that just, the business went out of business and went out, yeah?
It's 398 School Street, so it's pretty high turnover.
So basically, it's going to cost us more to get a new attorney to go after them than what they actually owe.
Right. It typically happens that way, but, you know, we don't lose anything by, you know, trying the easy way.
And this is no, this is no longer recorded in Trio because of the new system upgrade? Doesn't go back that far?
No, these are, it's the old foreclosures down below she's referencing.
Right, but she's, she said she put, she, she tracks them on a spreadsheet because they're not in the new updated system. Is that right?
Yeah, that's the, um, so there's, I guess, three...
The old ones. Right, those are the, just the old ones.
Old ones, okay.
93, 97, and 2010 from, for the years.
So we have, we still have people that owe taxes from 1993.
Now that you're alive.
Yeah.
I, I believe...
So she's got three different things on this, no, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, like, what I had said was, when this originally had come up, is just that I don't mind writing off personal property. If businesses go out of business and they, they don't exist anymore, that's one thing. If the business still exists and they're just not paying, that's where I have a problem with writing off personal property.
Right.
So, you know, um...
So one of the things I actually will recommend for OMG, I want to double-check that they're out of business.
Yep.
If we can come back for that one. I know for a fact FGF is out of business.
Yeah, okay.
So I would support Lisa's recommend, request to write off FGF.
Okay. And the fourth item on here is, is $2,320.30 that it goes back to 1993.
Right.
Um, on foreclosed properties, that is just basically outstanding taxes that are essentially uncollectible.
What, properties ever sold?
They're foreclosed.
The property's never sold?
If it's ever sold.
Okay.
If the properties are ever sold, we could, taxes do.
Okay, because the owners no longer own them?
We, the town of Berwick owns those properties.
Oh, it's, okay. All right, that's, that's the, okay.
So, um...
All right, let's start from the top then. Uh, friendly fire, LLC is just a memo.
Yep.
Um, OMG, I make a motion to table that, so we get more information on whether or not they're currently in business.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, we need to vote on tabling it, or... All right, we'll just hold on a little bit.
Yeah, we can table it, yeah.
Um, FGF, I'll make a motion to write off the amount of $1,107.54.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
And then for the old foreclosures dating back to 1993, 1997, and 2010, I will make a motion to write off the taxes of $2,320.30 as of June 30th, 2024.
So my, uh, I'll make a second demotion for discussion.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so I just want to be clear, we own these properties now, the people do not.
Right.
We own them, okay.
And if we were to sell the properties, we would recoup the taxes that we're writing off now.
Right, okay.
Um, any other discussion?
Um, just a couple of questions about the, the... Um, just a couple of questions about the, the thirty-two old Route four is almost two acres of land. Um, is, why don't we sell it?
Yeah.
It's a buildable house lot, two acres, is, you know?
That's a good question, why are we holding on to it?
Is, uh, Little River Road, I, I believe that one is actually on the other side of the river, and you don't have access from Little River Road. I think I recommend, I remember that one.
Yeah, that's why I remember that one.
Yeah, there's a little piece of, so, and then Bell Street.
That one actually abuts Memorial Park.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that, that's where Bell Street used to go through.
Didn't we talk about looking at purchasing that at one point? Is that the one?
Different, because it, this is like a, it's a long skinny piece.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's not buildable or anything.
Right.
Yeah, we should probably keep that.
We can utilize it, we can utilize it.
Yeah, if we don't, yeah.
That's my screen's got it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, those, uh, we can definitely look into selling that property for sure. Um, and, uh, 'cause again, if it, if it's just in there not doing anything, there's really no point, right? So, um, but for right now...
That's a bill of the law, we could, at this point, sell it.
Yeah. And I, I, I don't know if that new law would be in effect, I think, if we had, if you foreclosed years ago, you know what I mean? It's not something, you know? Second to motion, all those in favor? All right. James will get back to us with OMG, probably next meeting, a meeting after that. Um, approval of accounts, duh, 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 nope, already there, li-, MMA policy updates, that's where we're at. Um, so this is essentially, we are voting for one of two people, well, two people out of two people, that want to be the Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee members. Unless anybody else has any better suggestions, I am happy to nominate William Ward and Dwayne Moran for the positions.
I'll second that.
Yep.
I've been on that before. It's no fun.
So we shouldn't nominate you? It's no fun.
You're not saying you want to be written in for it?
Don't say that till after we put them on.
No, no, no.
You know, Dwayne's a good friend of mine, but, you know, the job's no fun, we'll send him up there.
Dwayne's already been up there, I know that, so. He knows what's best.
Motion in a second, uh, all those in favor? Terrific. Now we have the Lions Club, Abdober application for a liquor license for an incorporated civic organization, Cornhole for Cure at Dunn Farm. Gotta be fun. James, tell us a little bit about it.
I don't know anything about it.
The second time they've done this, they did it last year.
It sounded familiar, so.
They did it last year, we approved it last year.
Mm-hmm. Same deal.
Great success, and they raised a lot of money on it.
Yep.
Raising money for childhood cancer.
Yeah. There was no issues last year, right?
No.
Yeah.
No. I'll make a motion that we approve the application for, uh, the liquor license for the Lions Club of Dover, Romanford and South Berwick.
Second.
For, for Circuit Road for August tenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Terrific. Uh, all right, no quitte-in deeds, no abatements. Does anybody wish to speak for a second public comment? All right.
Nothing done?
Great, you woke him up.
Well, I, I just wanna know, obviously, there's a lot of talk around town about tax assessment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody's been reassessing. Is, you know, a lot of, lot of, uh, misinformation running around out there. Is, uh, the, the reassessment is something that's mandated by the state. And we have to, you know, keep our assessment in line with what properties are, real, real properties are being sold for. So this is something that happens every few years. Um, everybody's complaining, my, my assessment went up a hundred and forty thousand dollars. As, uh, my, uh, family's property actually went up almost two hundred thousand dollars. I don't like paying taxes any more than anybody else, but I like having the town run and being run well. So, is, I just, you know, like everybody to take a deep breath. And, uh, we will be setting the tax rate later this year, and, um, I will guarantee that it will be coming down, so.
The tax rate will be commensurate with the value of the property of the town. If the property of the town doubled, then the tax rate would commensurately come down to match that. Because, guess what? The budget for the town did not double, so, you know? I think, what did we end up with for this year? Was it like about a, was it like five or eight percent did it increase?
Eight percent, yeah.
Yeah.
Eight percent.
Yeah, we definitely did not double the budget of the town, so. All right, um, we are gonna go into executive session for a discussion of personnel. We're not gonna be making any, uh, decisions in that, that, um, that, uh, session, so we won't be coming back out. Um, is there any other business non-agenda items that people wish to discuss? I would just say, everybody should have a really happy Fourth of July.
Please be safe.
And enjoy your families and enjoy the time together. Dover's fireworks are the sixth this year, and Sanford's is the third. So, you got, you got time to do fireworks on either side and enjoy the Fourth right in the middle there. So, uh, everybody have a great...
Please be responsible with your fireworks.
Absolutely, be responsible.
Get out the wrong fireworks, just please be safe, be responsible.
Yeah, and every sensible...
Hopefully we're not in a drought.
Yeah. Check the fire, then, the fire station has a new fire warning sign up front. Go check that before you go light anything on the weekend. All right, um, I will make a motion that we enter executive session under Title One, Subsection four oh five, six A for discussion of personnel.
Second to motion.
All those in favor? Good night.